We're here for our work session and tonight's topics, the discussion are loyalty programs, ordinances, impact fees at time commits, and codification. So I guess maybe codification first and then impact fees at time commits. So we have someone here to present this loyalty program. Can I fix you around one second?
Good evening, my name is Carmine Falco. I am managing director of Pink Credit Inc., now different spelling.
A L.
E E F A L.
I thought it was spelled Monroe.
From Pink Credit Inc. Our company started with property tax reward program approximately, we started working on it approximately three years ago. And about a year ago in September of last year, we started our first program in Marlboro, Shop Marlboro. The way the program works is very simple. The township issues property tax cards such as this one, this is from Shop Marlboro. This is Pequannock, this is Island Park, we also have Shop Bayonne, which we just launched. They mail the cards to all the residents in town. When they shop in town, a participating merchant, they swipe the card and a percentage of the sale, at the discretion of the merchant, goes back to this person's property tax bill. So the more the person shops in town, the more property tax credit he or she will accumulate in our, in our account. So the, the program, the way it works is very simple because every year, we then transfer all the money that we have accumulated to the township so that the township can apply to block and lot. And it's a simple payment file, just like mortgage company would pay for the, for the taxes, we will do the same thing. Now, you probably have, I would imagine, an admin that does this for you, as a software company. We work with admins, we upload the tax file on our system so that, and when people register their card online with us, that's how the card is connected to the block and lot of that individual. So that's how we know that, to associate the card with the block and lot. In Marlboro, for the first shopping year, actually eight months from September to April 30th, the township saved, the residents saved about $20,000 in property taxes. On sales and purchases utilizing the card of $360,000. We now on track to do a million dollars in purchases with the card for a tax savings to the community of about $60,000 to $70,000. We recently launched Bayonne and we are also in the, in the process of launching Highland Park and Pequannock. Pequannock is a town in New Jersey. We are going to launch shortly also War East, which is near area about 20 minutes south. And, and it's really working out very well for these townships, so we are very pleased. In Marlboro, we have 47 merchants participating to the program and we have about 2,500 families that have registered. In Bayonne, in about two weeks, we have about 2,000 families that have registered their cards. And now they started going out and shopping in town. Basically, it is a way to keep people shopping in town because many towns do not want to lose funds to other towns and other stores outside of town. So this is in a nutshell what the program is. I sent some information, I hope you got the email from us as far as how the program works. And if you have any questions, I'm here for that.
Questions from council, from Mr. Falco? I didn't get a chance to check my email today, so I don't have to.
The, the cards are not a cost to the township because what townships do, they ask sponsors, they find sponsors, usually it's the bank where the town goes banking with. They purchase the cards and the window clings, that looks something like this, this is called War East. So banks usually purchase the cards for the, for the township, so there is no cost to the township. The only thing we request to the township is that they continue to market the program because it's their local program. We adjusted back office operation, the township really owns the program. So in your case, if we will be shop on Holly, it will be your program to manage. So, I mean, we manage it, but it's your program. It's a very simple program, it's a loyalty program. And so, I don't know, I know that Audrey contacted us, but I guess somebody saw the, maybe perhaps one of you guys saw the, aware of the program.
Yeah, I saw it in something, I mentioned it to, one of the meetings I talked about it and I mentioned it at a, Main Street Mall Holly meeting and Audrey picked it up and ran with it. So, here you are. Now, would you also then work with, would they be working with Main Street Mall Holly as well, Audrey?
Well, I don't know, I mean, we can certainly facilitate in, in getting the businesses to come on board. I mean, I think that would be our role. I don't, we wouldn't get involved in the actual, you know, anything processing would be on your end. I think getting two things, one is to get the residents to, to pick up the cards and, and start using the card and getting the businesses to buy in. Although I was pleasantly surprised to see that Marlboro having only 45, I, I worry sometimes about us being small, but 45 businesses sounds very attainable to me.
Actually, we, we started Marlboro and now we're starting Bayonne, we only have few businesses. So we started Marlboro with 15 businesses and it grew to 47. So as long as you have, you have a small town. So as long as you have 10, 15, hopefully have for that high volume, which means from restaurants and else along, and so on, then we are good. That means you can really have a program. As far as recruiting the merchants, we'll, we'll work with you. And Danny was here with us, he's the person responsible for this area. So he will be coming down as often as he can, as he can to go and pitch the idea to the merchants and sign them up.
And it applies to, like, we could use it for grocery shopping and buying gas and all those others.
If we can get those people in, absolutely. If we can get a gasoline station, that, that's very small margins. Grocery stores, corporate are very hard to get, however, we are trying right now. So we know the town because they all own the shop rights. I don't know, who do you have in town?
Acme.
Acme, everybody wants the large ones and it's not easy, but we'll work with them and if you know people in town, absolutely. So that works really nice. As far as the council is concerned, what we need is a resolution. That's how most towns have done it, they've done it by resolution. And some towns have done it by ordinance, but the state is looking very closely at this and it's going to facilitate so that everybody can do it by resolution.
Are you working, are any of these towns, you know, are you looking at it? Are any of the towns that you're already working, you know, program with or any of the ones that are, are going to be launching, are they UEZ by any chance?
Only one.
Is it Bayonne?
Right.
Bayonne is, Bayonne is.
It's UEZ, only because they want to do it to be UEZ. Are you guys UEZ over here?
Yeah.
You are, okay.
So you're able to work with, in Bayonne, you're working with UEZ and UEZ funds then?
Well, the thing is this, they really didn't fund anything because Bayonne got their cards from Bayonne Community Bank and they invested $31,000 for $30,000 cards. So the cards are like a dollar a piece, but you don't need that many, so it might be a little bit more expensive. We'll have to figure it out, or maybe we can bunch your order together with somebody else's order to, to make it, to make it reasonable. And with what orders coming up, so. So they get a sponsor for the cards. I know that UEZ in Bayonne would probably do some advertising with UEZ money, which is important.
Right, that's where I was trying to get.
Right, which is really nice. Right now, the kind of advertising that counts is through social media, so those are the inexpensive type of advertising. But it's nice to have four or five foot pages a year in the local papers and that's not really a lot of money. So that, that could work very nicely.
The reason I was talking to you was that you mentioned in your presentation that the only thing that you actually were looking for was the township to market the program. So that's where, you know, UEZ, right now UEZ has an advertising, you know, budget there. Hopefully we'll continue going forward and that's, you know, it's important that you already had established this program in a township that has UEZ program. So, you know, we know now right from the door that it should be compatible on that, you know, you've already gotten.
Is your entire town UEZ or do you have areas which are not UEZ?
There's areas.
There's areas, because those businesses we have to also, we would try to get as many businesses as possible, even the ones in the non-UEZ area. And I don't know if that works as far as the funding is concerned, you know what I'm saying?
Right, so, yeah, we have the UEZ members, the starters, I'm guessing, right, and the UEZ zone. We can actually, that can be, can't that be, that can't be expanded?
Well, we try.
Well, we can do advertising for Matt Holly using UEZ dollars, it's not just UEZ business.
But it's not just down, well, downstairs isn't in the downtown area. It's still UEZ zone. Downtown, I thought it was just downtown home.
No, the map goes all the way.
Goes all the way to the bypass line, yeah. And then back down.
And then our partnership, so that's not going to happen. How about our new development, is that, you know, if we get new development and if, on the bypass, is that the UEZ?
It needs to be added.
It needs to be added.
No, the UEZ does.
Really, how could it be because right now it was all residential, yeah, exactly. Well, it's good that you're already, you know, experienced and you know, over the years.
I hear what you're trying to.
So that's a, that's a big plus.
Like I said, the only expense to you would be the cards which you're going to get, the window clings which you get funds for, let's say, and then the mailing cost because we like to have a mail to everybody's house, which is really a nice thing.
She just added something else.
I'm sorry, I thought I mentioned, but by the time I'm done tonight, I'll add those. So, anything else then you can think of, because you've been working with Bayonne.
We're going to give cards out to the hospital, right?
Yes, that's, you're the thing, you have a hospital over here, we are, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with your town, so passing by, this is the big hospital. People that do not own property but rent can also participate. Instead of property tax credits, they get a rebate check at the end of the year. So, so now you have maybe 800 people in the hospital, I don't know how many police you have. Or you have maybe Board of Education, I don't know, maybe you have a station, but they do not, police department, they do not live in town. You can give the card, they don't pay property taxes, so they register as renters or visitors. That means that at the end of the year, they get a check instead of getting rebate on their property taxes. See what I mean? It's the same thing, really, the only thing is they get a check.
So the employees of this township, that don't live in town, can get an actual cash rebate at the end of the year.
Correct.
Wow. You know, so.
It says here that there'll be a seven.
There's a seven dollar fee, that's right, that's right, which will be taken out of the rebate. So if you have $100, you get like three dollars.
What's the average community size who is associated with the program?
That's a, that's a nice question. We have, we have townships that have, well, I'll give, I'll give it to you all. Bayonne has 60,000, Marlboro is 45,000, Pequannock is about 23,000, Highland Park has 12,000, 13,000 people. So that would be more your, and they have a Main Street also by the way, and we're working with them, they have a city.
My trouble is going, I wanted to see if there was a town that was around about size in Hollywood, wasn't. How are they doing as far as?
We just started with them, yeah, we launched the program with them, we're going to launch in the next couple of weeks. I can tell you that in Marlboro, we have 2,500 families that have registered and they're achieving those kind of returns. So if you can get 2,000 people to register, families to register, and that will be probably your entire population because you must have like 3,000.
No, 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 we're almost 10,000.
10,000 people, but you have 3,000 households.
Right, right.
Right, so we have about 2,500 households. Yeah, so 3,000, so if you can get a couple of thousand people, including also the hospital and the renters, then, then I can tell you that you should be doing okay and maybe make about 1,000, 1,000 or within property tax credits. It really depends how much you shop in town, it's a hidden miss, it can go anywhere from $10 to the mayor of Marlboro, say, than $500 in seven months.
Say what is the most, the highest taxpayer that you've made in Marlboro?
That, that was the highest, the mayor was like $500 in seven months, in eight months. I was the second, $400, my wife, she spent $5,000 to get the phone, that's the part that I don't like. So, that's what happened.
You said 700, eight months?
500, 500 in eight months, the mayor. And he actually published his tax bill right on his Facebook account, so.
Well, if you're already shopping, need to locate it, so when I get a little bit back.
My question would be, Audrey, have you done, or even now, have you guys done the initial polling with any of the businesses, not just those in North Jersey that are within the Main Street program, but any other ones, have any kind of idea of participation numbers?
We haven't and the reason that we have not is because we really wanted to come here and see if it was something that council would have interest in. I think we can easily do that, not a problem and we can handle it promptly. The two things we needed to know was, is there buy-in from council for us to at least explore it? And the second thing was, we needed to work through with Carmine, see if we can make sure that we're completely sure of all the costs. We know the benefits to the best businesses, we just need to make sure that we know the costs. I mean, I know their fee is 25% of.
Of the actual rebate.
Exactly, of the actual rebate.
Yeah, there are some actual costs in regards to setting up, depending on the terminal you use, if it's comparable, might need a different one.
I think the next step would be if, if you guys think it sounds worth exploring, I guess is the question.
I think the first answer we need to know is if the businesses in the township want to start doing something of this nature with the $10 a month fee and then whatever quote-unquote marketing promotion they would normally regularly do, but use in this format instead. If it's a buy-in, then now, based on the program, I don't think anyone would argue, it sounds like a way we promote taxpayers as well as an opportunity to have the shopping within town. So I think, I think the first, you know, figure is that.
Yeah, it sounds like.
Or do the businesses want to do this, you know, is it worthwhile to do it?
So you have the buy-in that you wanted from the council, right? We're all in, we all, if there's a business, if there's a business interest, are we all in favor of moving forward with this? All right, so you have, you have that, we're all in favor. You need to think of that, all right, well, we've got three, maybe, maybe five, Mr. Belton's not here either.
Well, he's on our committee, so I think I.
I would think so. So there's an interest and if you want to follow through with what Mr. DeFalco was just suggesting as far as the whole window, come back with some numbers and, and also I guess look for that sponsor that, you know, Mr. DeFalco's been talking about.
Well, you're already happy to work with Carmen, we'll figure out some, some piece that we can send out to the businesses.
And this program is not only working with a current UEZ city in this case, but also, you mentioned, working with another town that has Main Street. So you have, you have experience, you know, under your belt with dealing with both the organizations that we have in place. So, that's a plus.
I do have other questions, but I, I think they'll retain more if there is some feedback from the merchants. It's one less to address some issues that I may have right now until then. So, I mean, if the merchants don't want it, then it's important to spring up a program.
We agree.
Plus, while you know that there are some concerns that I have that need to be addressed.
Understood.
Rocky?
Yeah, I just feel it, just probably could dovetail in pretty easily with what we're doing, trying to market and promote through the UEZ stuff. If it, you know, if we land with this, it ties in with something we're already doing.
I mean, you are aware, basically you know all the costs, I believe you read the literature. It's totally free if you process online. There's a cost of 160 for a regular machine, which is yours. And if you want an IP machine, it's a little bit higher, it's 230. But otherwise, end of $10 a month and then to leave.
Is there any downside to the, to the doing it for free?
No, but I'll tell you what it is, if you have a high-volume business, like restaurants, and you have a lot of people going in and out, that, that, they will want a machine. But places that doesn't have all day traffic, you can do it online. Or you can even do a log and put it in at night after, after the day, as long as you put it in, because that calls us, believe me.
50, 160, 230 is a yearly charge, right?
Say that again?
That's a yearly charge?
Which one?
The 50, 160, 230 numbers?
No, 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 the 160, the 160, that's the equipment, that's the equipment, the cost of equipment.
That's why I wanted to verify that.
The 50 is the little swiper you put on the side of the thing.
That's a one-time charge, not a monthly.
No, no, absolutely not.
Swipe these, it's not a credit card.
Okay.
Okay, well, those are the details, I'm sure, just DeFalco's about correct there, so it's all a little deeper into detail. The folks that are allowed to participate were Main Street UEZ, you know, people. Is there anyone in the general public that would have any questions on this for Mr. DeFalco before we move forward? So anyone on the right-hand side of the room, my left, my right, your left? I should say, anyone over here on this side of the room want to ask Mr. DeFalco anything about this program? No, okay, how about over on this side of the room? Nope, okay.
I wanted to add also because it's important also for the public to know that when you shop, you get an email back saying, thank you for shopping over here and, you know, you've earned this much credit and you can go online and check your credit. So you know exactly, no, we have checking balances in place, so you know exactly how much you're going to get at the end of the year.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and good night.
Thank you, same to you.
Is, real quick, before you sit down, is this PowerPoint that was printed out, the one that was emailed to us proprietary, can we post it on the website and do an online poll with the community who uses the website and have them read it and see what the response is as well, as far as utilization of the program?
You mean, you would like to post it on the website? Absolutely.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Next order of business would be ordinances. We have, there's, there's a need to have a discussion about changing our ordinances, both for the legitimate, it's kind of crazy saying that, the legitimate, I do want to look at somebody when I say that, but. And the, and the other ordinance was on tattoo shops, basically, we come home, get in society, so. Which, which, I want to talk about the, let's start with the brewing person, the brewing person. Unfortunately, Mr. Belton was the one that was most key on discussing square footage requirements, if I remember correctly, for the apartments and whatnot. So, you know, I was expecting him to be leading on that, but since he's not here, what do you got, what are those comments from the council on, on the past comments that Mr. Belton had and the questions that were raised regarding square footages that were in here? As far as this order is just going, this amendment just going forward? This has yet to go to planning board or board of managers for as well, right? So, let me discuss briefly whether we're avoiding our presentation. Besides the square footage piece, what other issue, what, that was it, I think that was it. Honestly, I don't have an issue with the script at this current time, I just prefer Mr. Belton to go with it. But for purposes of the applicant and moving forward and coming matter, I think we need to spend a bit more time reviewing the technicals of all. With respect to the B1 district and all of the specific square footage ordinance that are changing to that in conjunction with the match plan and the form-based code, we've been there through the topic over the past six months, which I don't think will get resolved anytime soon. You guys need to get moving on this, what we're doing at this point is discussing to discuss. It's, in my opinion, move forward the change in the ordinance to reflect that the microbrewers and maybe whatever their fall. Move forward, so we can get some business done. What exactly are the changes as far as?
I don't, I don't have them with me, Dick. I actually, the, I'm not prepared either, I didn't bring my briefcase and I just brought the envelope and we weren't provided with the square footages last week.
I have it.
And I don't know what the differences are between what was on, what was provided to us, Mr. Martin, in this amendment.
I said, do you know something on this?
Well, I questioned it last time on the 25 square feet, everybody seems to think that's the apartment size and not the lot size.
It says lot area, 2,500 square feet.
Right, so you guys are on board that the lot size, not the square footage and apartment size, correct?
Well, it says, it says lots.
Well, I mean, that was Belton's argument the last time and that's why I questioned it last.
149, 110B says a lot area of 2,500 square feet.
You got duplex residential dwelling half unit, all requirements, one, and underneath that is saying 2,500 square feet minimum required. Lot width, 25 feet, I'm going to read that.
Yeah, also the lot area.
And single-family detached, 4,000 square feet, all requirements, but they, they do, you know, say lot area. Now, and then lot size, for waterfront commercial use, that's a lot size, so it's, you know, lot frontage. It's, it's pretty well worded.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, straightforward. I thought the main objection was the square footage on the conditional usage for the apartment stuff and that was efficiency, so here, efficiency 450, one bedroom 600, two bedroom 800, three bedroom 900 square feet, plus 100 square feet for additional, feet additional for each bedroom in excess of three. That's what I wanted to compare to what we got last week.
Did you see the email from Barbara Fagley to Vicki and Bill? Bet she recommends the B1 ordinance at 149, 110B. Did that 2,500 square feet family unit be deleted, it's confusing and irrelevant, and she provides ordering, it should be it.
I can't, there was an email that I can remember from 28, she says, too much at points of time. I recommend 2,500 square feet per family be deleted, that's just confusing and irrelevant.
This email, right?
Yeah.
So if it's a, if the planner's recommendation that is, you know, it's confusing and, you know, irrelevant, then would it be, would it be, they will the council go with this, you know, the planner's suggestion and, you know, direct that be removed?
And the property maintenance code, which we use, does specify size for, you know, single occupancy, double occupancy.
I was going to say regarding our, I'm just, I guess confused on what the. But just for teens to look.
Well, here's a, here's another, here's another piece of that email saying, I think he was looking for 500 square feet minimum for a one-bedroom unit, 550 for a two-bedroom, I guess he, I'm not sure who he is. Maybe it was Mr. Belton or somebody else, but.
How does it pertain to the?
I don't know.
I just want to figure it out.
Bob should be.
That's why I think the whole thing should be reviewed, apparently there's issues with it in regards to this square footage minimum maximum apartments. But again, I don't know how this pertains to the brewery, what you're talking about. I think we should, at, at least have the planners, you know, I'll turn it back and discuss whatever they need, they're recommending this thing, but we need to move over the ordinance. So this could, this could basically be addressed at the planning board, right?
I mean, that's what I'm thinking, you know, uh, I, I don't want, I can't speak to Mr. Belton if, if, if the person that's being referred to here, you know, it looks like what somebody is looking for is larger square footage for these, for these units because here you've got, you know, here, here, this, this, this here for the second provision, there's comments about six hundred and fifty square foot for, uh, one bedroom, eight hundred and fifty square foot for two bedrooms. That exceeds what's in the amendment.
Yeah.
Right here. So I think, I think, um, you know, I think they're, they're, I think the intent of the discussion tonight regarding this was if we wanted to increase the square footage for the apartments, does that make any sense?
No.
Does that make sense to me? How? I think, I think we're talking about, we want to amend, to allow it here, but based on previous discussions, we were all, we're all in agreement.
I, I didn't, I didn't have any problem with this.
If I could make a, if I, you know, so. Can I make a one time? Go ahead, what do you have? Okay. So the planning board sent this back.